Good evening, everyone.
Before the start of tonight's meeting, we met in executive session. We discussed matters of litigation, real estate, and personnel. Before we start with the presentation, I'd like to move Chief Logan up in the agenda because he has to leave for his wife's birthday. So Chief, do you want to go ahead now?
Yeah, within your board, within the packet is a request for tenure being granted to Officer Weldy. Officer Weldy was hired in, excuse me, July of 2018. He's gone through our field training program, which is approximately, it's almost 52 weeks, an entire year. He was under the supervision of Sergeant Ziegler, and I am requesting that the Board of Supervisors grant him tenure effective July 23rd of this year.
Okay. Is there a motion to that effect?
Make that motion.
Thank you. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
You may go now.
Thank you.
Happy birthday to Diane. All right, now the presentation from the park and director, advisor, expert, park board, however you want to proceed. Thank you. Karen?
Thank you. I'd like to thank you for your time and this opportunity to present tonight. I've been asked to speak a little bit relative to community, can you hear me? Recreation building. My task is to speak to you about functionality of space. I'm going to ask you for this portion of the presentation to just take out of your minds sizes and shapes, and we're going to, we're going to talk about general use space relative to a small, medium, and large type of facility. If you, I beg your indulgence briefly, that next, I added a few extra slides to provide some information about what community recreation centers are. We haven't had a lot of public conversation about this, and with hopefully a very large television audience, we're going to share a little bit of information. I'd like to share with you that through a lot of research and study, I want to ensure you that a center doesn't, is effective, always a valuable asset to a community. It serves as a hub of activity to the community and provides and allows for community engagement. Next. There's been a lot of names referred to as we go through this process. I've done some research, and while they're very, very similar, community centers by definition and recreation centers are slightly different. One leaning more towards just general gathering place and one leaning a little bit more heavily in activities, program services, athletics. The current trend today is referring to community recreation center. Whatever your druthers ends up being, I just wanted to share that information. Next. All the, all the activity is happening in the, in the back tonight. They have, they do have a positive impact on community. They promote active lifestyles, promote a culture of well-being, health and, and healthy community, open to all different groups and users of people, all ages and interests, provide opportunity for mentorship, growth, and learning. Again, a hub of engagement, all-inclusive, promote safe and healthy community, and do provide for outside economic growth into the community itself. Next. Oh, there it is. Okay. There are three primary critical factors when looking at the space that you're, that's going to be under consideration, whatever it is. And again, I'm talking in general and broad-based terms. They are physical, functional, perceptual. The physical component is accessibility, and it's not just into the building or around the building, but it's getting to it from, from outside space. The elements and components, and that it is public. Functionally, we're talking about what's going to happen in the space, what's inside the box, and that speaks to social activity, learning, athletic activity, cultural opportunities, open space, which is drop-in and public use opportunities, and commercial typically refers to rental opportunities to drive additional income. And thirdly is perceptual, and that speaks to the safety, perceived safety, aesthetics, and then it's an inviting facility to go to. If we're going to build something, we want to make sure that people want to go there and that they feel good about being there. Bringing that together, the three primary components, physical, functional, perceptual, they act both independently and intrinsically linked at different times for different purposes. Getting into the meat of it now. Next. I'm here to talk about small, medium, and large. I'm going to get back to first things first, and we have a few questions to ask. Who are we looking to serve? What services do we want to provide? Services tend to determine the shape, what we want to put into the box. We should determine first what we want to put in the box, wrap the box around it and see what we, we end up with. And of course, ultimately, we always want to be responsible, both in terms of developing that space and fiscally. Do we want to look at current status of service delivery? Do we want to look at future and expanded service potential? What could the facility be used for? And how do the spaces affect delivery of services and enrichment, enriching the community? In short, the primary things we want to look at and the flow that we want to look at is the users, uses, need and desire, balance of service, shape and size, all coming together to serve our Doylestown Township community. I'm going to look at small, medium, and large. In essence, small, for best description for here tonight, small is what we've had. Small is the former activity center, single-serve use, one program at a time, limited rental opportunities, limited revenue opportunities, and it does not provide for any athletic or active-use activity. This one, I'm going to guess is hard to see. I'd like you to focus on the categories. We've just tried to pull together some service delivery categories that we can help you understand and refer to what is potential in different spaces. Enrichment and educational, community service programs, specialty-type camps similar to what we're running now, and a limited rental capacity. Some of the subcategories, dance, canine, performing arts, cooking, blood drive seminars, wellness screenings, camps being robotic, theater, cooking. They're, they're broad-based. There's a multitude of different dance programs, cooking programs. I'm just trying to give a snapshot of where we are and what we could potentially provide. In this case, it's more than likely single-serve, single-service. If we look at that mid-range concept that was put out, it does expand the opportunities. Again, it depends what you want to put in the box as to what you're going to deliver out of the box. There is potential for expanded multi-use programming. There is potential for small, small to mid athletic activity, probably more instructional camp delivery, limited possibility, some possibility of outside rental in that capacity, but it would not be full-service. It would be small, small practice, small camp, small instruction, but you would not be able to deliver full-service gymnasium capacity, which would include league and organizational rental opportunities, practices, games, and other functions that would be of athletic nature. When you look to a larger facility, you could potentially include and recommend a full gym, league rental for games and practices. It enhances community drop-in opportunities, open space, open opportunity for the community. You can move your athletic-type functions from mid to large, and in many cases, your enrichment instructional community service programs can be multi-service. In other words, you have more than one thing at a time, including drop-in activities. So whether that's senior, teen, we work heavily with CB cares, opportunities to enhance our community and create that hub of engagement. Taking all of that, and there's long lists, we tried to create a snapshot of category headings, looking at the potential, and again, nondescript, small, medium, and large spaces, and what could and couldn't be done in there. And while you'll see in column A, you can do things, again, I remind you, it's more of a single-serve opportunity. Medium, you can do these things. They're going to be on a small to mid scale, and in large, you can expand those spaces to include a greater level of athletic program, larger seasonal camp programs. So in medium, well, you may have 30 to 40 people. In large, you might be able to accommodate 40 to 60. The capacity potential, I think, is fairly clear. In terms of gym multi-use, it's really not applicable. In the medium, you're going to get smaller, say half maybe. Large, you'll get full. Classroom or instructional space or gathering spaces, single-use, small to medium, multi-use, there's a taper right there under medium, and medium to large in the large space. I think what's most important of all this, the entire message here is that service delivery is dependent on the building design, what's in the box. When we, when we look at what we want to develop, when we look at what we want to put in the box, and then pick a box. We're going to go on a trip, we're going overnight, we're going to take a overnight bag, we're going to go two weeks cross-country, you're probably going to pack what you want in your bag in a much larger bag, and there's a range in between. So I think there's a lot of discussion to be had about that. I'm going to turn it over to Judy at this point, and thank you for your time. I hope I provided some interesting information for you. And Judy?
This part is the Judy and Rob Show. It's going to be, go quick.
Just identify yourselves for the viewing audience, please.
I'm sorry. Judy Stern-Goldstein with Boucher &amp; James Township Planning Consultant.
Karen, don't go. Are you Karen? She's coming back. Oh, okay. Sorry. She has an issue at home. I had some questions.
I'm Rob Gallant with the JD Bravo Company.
And next slide, please. There we go. In your packets, you saw the plan options matrix, and it looks a little complicated. I'm going to break it down for you, and we're going to talk about it in generalities, then we're going to zip through the different options. There were 10 sketch plans done, but I think we can lump them into pretty much big. The blue, the top, are the options that were shown on the New Britain Road site. The ones in the red were at the detention basin site, sort of adjacent to Kids Castle in the central part of the park. And the green was the pavilion site, the existing pavilion on the other side of the internal driveway from Kids Castle.
Is this the same information we were providing in our packet?
Yes.
The same color thing on?
Yes, same color. We didn't...
Because we have, I have, everyone has reviewed it, so if you want to get to the point.
Okay. The point is that there's different pros and cons for each of the sites, there's different prices for each of the sites. I'm just going to jump into it real, real quick. New Britain Road, basically, there is sufficient room there. There is additional room if we possibly look at reconfiguring the existing fields, which are different-sized play than they need to be now because the field of play is smaller for PA Rush, but that's a little more detail than you need at the moment. It's probably the least expensive of the two viable options for development.
It has a smaller premium. You know, the, the location at the center of the park where we're building over top of the retention area has the greatest premium sitework-wise, and that's really what this kind of comes down to in comparison. Sizes of the buildings will affect square footage in a very similar fashion, but the, the locations, the premium at New Britain Road is getting the utilities there. At the central area of the park, the premium is putting an underground basin in of some level, depending on how much of the parking lot is over the basin, how much of the building is over the basin.
I think one of the things that jumps out at me in bidding zoning approval, through this a year, a few years ago, we wanted to get the surrounding resident comfortable. Are you going back again and try to get...
In, on the New Britain Road option, there's a zoning compliant plan, and then there were two sketches of zoning non-compliant. One was the larger building, one was the middle-sized building, I guess, and that would involve a setback. It's actually the side yard and front yard setback. In that case, it's significantly different. That would be a variance, sorry, that would be a variance. The option, the issue we were dealing with before was rezoning the property from residential to the municipal use. So this wouldn't be a zoning change, it would be a zoning hearing board variance. And there is also the option to comply with the setbacks. It just sets the building back farther and is more limiting on your parking.
That's the 8,000-square-foot building as well?
Yes, the eight or the 12, or medium or large is, I guess, we're talking about them today.
Well, if there's a new utility issue on New Britain Road, why is the 8,000-square-foot one so less, so less more, so more, so less than the others?
That's due to the location of the parking lot and size of the parking lot.
Okay. So of the 2, of the 2.7 million, how much of that is utilities, getting the utilities on site? If you know.
To my recollection, it was probably in the neighborhood of $800,000.
Okay, so then, to build that building at that location is like $1,800 plus, 1.8 million, and then the utilities.
Well, utilities and, and all the sitework also.
And all the sitework.
Right.
Looking at option...
And except for some variances, it could be built there.
Right, and there would be a variance involved there. And then just to look at the other pros and cons, the New Britain Road site is separate from the major core or hub of most activity, which is a pro and a con. There's an opportunity to expand park service to another area that's less congested, and then there's also the ability to put it right in the heart of things. So you could look at that either way. It's an opportunity and a constraint. It adds, if you were in the basin area with this building, community recreation center, you're adding more activity at the part of the park that's the most congested, the most active, and clearly is underparked today, even with Kids Castle temporarily closed. So when we add the additional parking, it's great that we're adding additional parking, but it might just be meeting the base need, and we might be looking at additional parking beyond that in the future. Just to put it all out in front of you, there's, there's pros and cons to each one of these options. It's going to really come down to the building size and type that philosophically the board wants to see for the future, and then which site meets the most of the boxes that you really feel are important.
If I can go back to what...
If I can answer the previous question first. Option B, the site work was worth about $756,000. And option C, option, that was option B, option C was about a little over $700,000.
For utilities?
And utilities for option B were about $210,000. For option C, they were about $190,000. So there are minor variances due to the location of the building, due to size of the parking lot, location of the parking lot, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
My question for clarity, though, is that number at the far right, 4.2, that's signed, sealed, delivered, everything, and just open the door?
Well, you know, to speak, I'll answer that question speaking to it this way first. Understand that we have a site plan, and we have a block plan, and we put together, and I stand behind our numbers. It is, construction-wise, it's signed, sealed, and delivered. It's our best estimate of what those buildings are going to contain, what they're going to look like, based on building, previous buildings, based on managing previous buildings. Our estimator has, has been very good over the last two decades that I've been working with them. So it is signed, sealed, delivered for construction, not for furnishings, not for design, not for permitting, all those things that are not part of our construction estimate.
The infrastructure that you were mentioning is in there.
Yes. And, you know, our, our task, that's what makes this portion of estimating or budgeting an art rather than a science. Our task is to try and anticipate, based on meetings that we've had, based on talking to the client, what you're looking for in your building, because it's not all on paper at this point. It's having a good understanding of what your buildings are going to look like, what their functions are going to be, as best we can determine at this point.
And the other thing that you need to keep in mind are that in order, in order to come up with numbers, in order to come up with a plan, we had to make assumptions on the square footage, and based on the information provided by township staff on what those boxes, as Karen referred to them as, what size and shape they would be, that affects the site plan and the square footage. When Rob is looking at a cost per square foot, obviously that comes into this too. So as the square footage goes up or down, the price goes up or down, and the site work goes up and down.
Correct.
Thanks, Rob. And the, the third site is the pavilion site, which was one that needed to get looked at. That one doesn't add any parking into that most congested part of the site. It would be using an area that's already basically flat for a building, it's the pavilion, and putting the building in place of it, but it doesn't add any parking. It's constrained there. So then if we go to the next slide, if that's just the plan of the, the aerial of the park showing the three different locations for anyone who's not totally familiar with what the site. The upper part, the screen, you see the New Britain Road site, which is accessed off of New Britain Road. In the central part, you see the pavilion site, which is the existing pavilion, and then the third one is the basin site, which is adjacent to Kids Castle and the amphitheater. And then do you want us to just zip through the site plans or not? Option A is the zoning compliant plan on New Britain Road. It's the larger of the buildings, and it adds some parking to the site. That, that part of the park is very, very congested when there is a tournament. When there is no tournament, it's not as congested. The congestion in that part is dependent on how the fields are programmed and how they're used, whether they're used for one game each, or four games each, or four practices each.
If I can add, the, the compliant portion of that doesn't prohibit, but restricts future expansion if you're to build a small, medium, or large building. The non-compliant, the reason for pushing the non-compliant forward is it gives you the opportunity to expand the building out the back with additional gymnasium space, whatever it is that you want. So that's, that's the reason why the non-compliant plan was under consideration.
Right. And the sketches you see on A, B, and then we can go to C also, they're all respecting the existing parking that's out there already and adding on to that parking. If we reconfigured and essentially took that light-green triangle out, we could get more parking into the site also.
Does that include consideration of the PennDOT parking?
The PennDOT parking would be off to the left on the plan. You see that in white?
Yes.
So that, that's additional parking that's out there that's available for the public to use. It's just not part of the park physically. And that, I believe, is 50-ish spaces?
But that's not part of any calculation that we can use?
No, we did not use that calculation.
Unless we had a lease with them.
Correct. But the C15 municipal use is based on the square footage of the buildings and the rooms of assembly, so the park itself is overparked. We have a plethora of spaces according to zoning ordinance, but for functionality, we need more, if that makes sense. Let's zip through then to the basin. Option 1 was adjacent to the amphitheater, right along the Loop Road on the higher part of the basin, and it did not add any parking in. It was just an option we were asked to look at, and Jeff did the preliminary grading on that, Jeff Antonazio, did the preliminary grading on that and looked at it. It, it works, but from an engineering perspective, but it doesn't work from a functionality perspective because it doesn't add any parking, and it puts more building and activity in the most active part of the park. Option B is in that same location. It adds parking. When this was presented to the township staff and to the Park and Rec Board, the feedback we got was that it was sort of blocking the view sheds to Kids Castle and the amphitheater, and they wanted us to explore other options and push it back farther. So the next option, you see it pushed back farther. That's the larger of the buildings. The parking was just continued from the existing parking and just pushed straight across to add additional parking. The next option, D1, we sort of tilted the parking down, it's a subtle change, made it parallel to the Loop Road, got a few more spaces in, and it sits, it sits a little better on the site. Subtle change, but it was part of the evolution.
How many acres is that, that parking lot?
How many acres is that parking lot?
I mean, if you can figure that quickly.
The acreage is probably...
I know one of them is 177 spaces and the other is 156, I believe. Beyond that, not...
It's a little over an acre, maybe acre and quarter, by my mental math, quickly.
Okay, that's a, I knew you could do that. I'm just seeing, we're taking a, a piece of the park, 103 acres, and making an acre of it as parking lot.
Yeah.
Right in the middle of the park.
It's, it's a lot of parking, and it's essentially taking the existing parking that's there and adding a little more than that parking lot already. But the good news is you would have more parking. The bad news is you have more paving right in the central part of the park. Again, there's a opportunity and constraint for each of these.
I think one of the things, Harper, you go to a lot of these, we all go to all these events, biggest complaints we hear from the residents is no facilities, no bathrooms, no water, and no parking. I think those three things, I understand this correctly, can be achieved, the basin area, which will solve the complaints we're getting from...
Well, one of the things that was actually in the last park recreation open space plan, the joint park recreation open space plan that was done with Doylestown Borough a little over 10 years ago, was the need for bathrooms in the Kids Castle area, and the basin option would, would provide that. The bathrooms would, there would be bathrooms opening out from the outside as well as ones internal to the building, so that would meet that need. If that, if this building is not put there, I'm sure that the need for bathrooms will still be noted in the current update that's being worked on for that park recreation open space plan. So eventually, the need for bathrooms will need to be addressed. This would address the one. Parking is an issue, and, and Rick, you're correct. Everyone wants to park right next to their activity. There are parts of the park that aren't utilized for parking that could be. They're only utilized for major events, only when people direct them to those spots, but we have to balance that with more activity in this area. For instance, this summer, Kids Castle's been closed, and there's still a parking issue down there. The good news is that the park is loved. The bad news is it is really loved. It's very used, so it's a great, it's a great problem to have.
Regardless of whether the, you're thinking, long-term, we're going to have to put some parking in.
I'm saying we're going to have to put some bathrooms there. I'm not sure more parking needs to go in that area, more parking overall in the park, and maybe redistribution of how people are using the parking in the park. But somewhere, there's going to be, need to be either more parking or more creative programming. Right now, I have to tell you, Karen and township staff are experts at programming and scheduling your program so that things don't overlap. They actually have to close certain elements of the park in order to have different events and functions. Okay, and then let's just zip through D1A, which is leaving room for an addition.
These options, at the basin, there's a significant cost. It varies, but you know, it's plus or minus a half million dollars in many cases if we're covering the entire basin. There's a significant cost of putting it down, putting in an underground retention system there that is more than just the expense of backfilling the, the basin itself to get the parking lot. That's a big driver in that location and driving the costs up.
And D2 is taking the area where we showed the gymnasium addition essentially, and putting more parking in that area just as an option. And the very last option... And the very last option is the pavilion, showing the smaller of the building options on the existing pavilion footprint. And then Karen had a slide in, the next one, talking about next steps. Narrow the options down. I think that, I'm not really, really, really bad at reading you, I think the pavilion site's one that we throw out.
Which one?
The pavilion site, the last one that didn't add any parking and put the building where the existing pavilion is?
Yeah, I think you can dispose of it. Anyone agree with that?
Okay, good, so...
Yeah.
All right, so that was good. Next, it'll come down to which preference it is for the site and which relative size would be needed to meet the programmatic needs to deliver the services for Park and Rec. Karen wanted us to share off, so that on September 19th, there's a public meeting. It's part of the park recreation open space plan update. And that meeting was previously going to be about the entire park and recreation system to get the public input. And now that meeting has been earmarked specifically to talk about the community center issues within that context.
I didn't realize Karen was leaving. She's the director.
Yes.
I was curious to what size and location she was leaning towards. Is that... Solid one, but leaning towards, what's her, she's the one that's got to make this work.
Well, then we can't make a rec, I won't make a recommendation until I hear from Karen what she thinks would be best.
I'm not sure. I asked that question, and she wasn't sure of the answer at this point. She said, she told me she did not yet have a recommendation. She's recommending a feasibility study, actually, about the overall needs and desires of the community, if I'm not mistaken on that, Stephanie.
Yeah, she's looking for more, she would like us to have more public input. I know that's very important. I think, you know, having that meeting on the 19th should help guide a little bit more as well.
I don't know what a feasibility study will do. I think it's good to get the input on the con plan from those folks on that meeting. But I think we know enough about what this community needs and what we can provide, and I don't think we need to spend another bunch of money on a study. I could be wrong.
Well, I don't think it's a matter of starting over on a feasibility study. I mean, there's been a lot of work, a lot of thought, a lot of time, putting all this stuff together. I think there is some value in understanding, though, what a good feasibility study gives you and how it's done. I was fortunate enough today to meet with Karen, and when she reviewed one feasibility study that was done, they didn't have just one community meeting, they had three community meetings. And so I think that's one of the more important questions, is how much involvement from the community should we get in order to make a decision? What's that input look like? And I'm not sure we've reached, in my mind at least, what that right level of community input. So I agree, I'm the last one that wants to drag anything out and spend more money, but I also think it's important that we at least attempt to try to get as much community involvement as we can that's reasonable. I don't think we've done that yet. We're embarking on that for that first outreach on the 19th. And hopefully, more than five people show up. So that's the struggle I have, is I don't want to have five meetings with five people each. That's not going to help us. So I struggle with this, is making sure we're getting the right amount of input.
I suspect that everybody's going to say, give us a big gym. Who wouldn't say that?
Yeah, I think one of the most important things that's missing here is an analysis of the potential revenue that can come in from a half gym versus a full gym.
They're doing that. I mean, yeah, they're doing that.
Okay.
And the other important piece is really to demonstrate the demand. How do we know that that demand is reasonable?
Sure.
For all the stuff. And that's where I think more involvement of the residents will give us, give us more confidence that it's right. But it's my opinion.
I don't have any problem with that. My position was I'd go with the director. The rest of it, I'm okay with.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, I would like to know what Karen's... I'm looking forward to our meeting that we're going to be having with the community and seeing what...
And everyone can go to that. The supervisors, all of us can go to that.
Yes, Judy. Are there other options that the board should consider of eliminating at this point in terms of, I know there's an option at the basin that doesn't have parking.
Yeah, the basin, no parking, I think is your second throwaway site.
Throw away the basin and its entirety. I think it's a really lousy spot for it. I think it should be not in the center of everything, and the site work that has to be done on that, the environmentals that you lose on that. And you can put it out on New Britain Road, you would have access on New Britain Road. You don't have to have people driving through the park off Wells Road. I think it's, the basin site is not the right site. And then you clutter up the whole park. Don't need to clutter up the park. And you can still do it down, you can do a 12-foot, a 12,000-square-foot or an 8,000-square-foot off New Britain and not have it affect the rest of the complex. That's what I think. I think, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I would eliminate the basin site.
I wouldn't want to open up the community involvement in two locations so much. I agree. I think we should provide the direction, is the pavilion in or out? Is the basin in or out? And narrow down their choices so we can hone this better and better as we're going along. And then let the, with the input from the community decide the functionality and the capability that goes into it. But let's stop talking about nine different sites.
And our experts here say both sites are feasible, and perhaps the basin is less feasible.
Right.
Is that what I heard from you guys?
Yep.
So you would agree with eliminating the basin if I had to put that to you?
I would.
I didn't hear it.
You would agree to eliminating the basin if I put it to him?
If we said the basin was less feasible, I think there was going to be more infrastructure work needed on it. But the plus side, look what we gained. I mentioned bathrooms, no parking. I don't think it was not feasible to even continue as we did with the pavilion. I think there's still some positives to it.
That was my word. I might have misspoke.
And if I could add to it, it keeps the center of activity near the township building so that Karen doesn't have far to go, Caitlin doesn't have far to go. We don't have golf carts all over the place going to New Britain Road. I think it centralizes it and then keeps that more virgin parkland down there. And that's why I'm not ready to throw out the basin. That's just my thought.
I'll just put in, I'll like take my supervisor cap off and put on my parent hat of three children who play a lot of sports. And if we go with the larger option where there's a full gym and there's kids running practices there, I mean, the congestion will be immeasurable at this if we do the basin site. It's just, it is, it's no matter what amount of parking we put, it is going to, I think, impede on the residents that are not necessarily coming to Central Park to use the community rec center. And I'm not saying I'm driven towards one, I'm just giving that perspective of, I see how these community centers or these rec centers where kids are playing sports, you know, it gets very congested, and that's just what's going to happen no matter what.
And I think the downside is not, well, I would like to toe, if Karen likes the basin and New Britain Road, or she doesn't like the basin, or she doesn't like New Britain Road, again, she's the one who's running this show.
Sure.
And I think that's a piece that's missing before I'm ready to throw either New Britain Road or the basin out.
I think we all kind of agree with that.
Yeah, but I'm also mindful of the cost. I mean, they would, I'm sure everybody in this community would like the best of the best, and Karen would like, you know, all the amenities and conveniences of a location. But if one is less expensive and it's just as, you know, proper, but I can't get over the basin being, I just can't, I can't imagine having a big complex in the center of Central Park.
I have a hard time. I think it changes the character of the park, large building and that, although it kills me to not have bathrooms by Kid's Castle, but I'm sure we can arrange that other way.
We can put bathrooms near Kid's Castle without having to put a whole municipal complex near it to provide the bathrooms.
I'm leaning towards New Britain.
Okay, can we at least vote on that, maybe? I'm going to call a question. How many, what, you want?
Nobody's made a motion.
All right, I'm going to move. All right, somebody make a motion.
I would like to make the motion that we narrow down the locations to only be for New Britain Road.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I'm calling a question. How many in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, so you have direction, location.
All right, so we have direction and a location. There's the meeting on September 19th. Public is invited, 7:00 PM, this room. It will be interactive. And going forward then, I guess we'll get the public input. We'll see if, at that point, the township board wants to engage someone to do a feasibility study or not. It's going to come down to what level of service will be delivered to the residents, whether it's programming, education enrichment, and athletics, or one or the other primarily. And with that, I guess I'm going to say thank you for your time.
Thank you. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okeydoke. Thanks, everybody. Moving on to the regular part of the meeting. Any visitors or public comment?
I'm Penny Laracy from 150 Old New Road. We're trying to update our wills and our estate, and a quarter of our estate is at risk because of the sewers. And I've been to the estate planning attorneys and presenting Section 7 of the ordinance, and in particular, the question is, the deed will remain in our name in trust for our survivors? Do we have to have a certificate by the Health Department and/or public caller to proceed with this planning? He doesn't understand it, I don't understand it. Here.
It simply says that if you have a certification from the Board of Health that there's no malfunction, you're not required to connect.
What about the deed? The deed's going in trust for?
The deed is immaterial, but the deed, that's just record of ownership. It doesn't talk about requirements of the owner. So we'll talk, I mean, I'll clarify this with the manager, and she'll give you a ring.
All right, the second question I have is on the PennVest loan. Should I opt to use it? I'm pretty close on finances right now. If I do use it, is there a provision in there that the survivors will be able to take over the loan at the same rate that we have? And if not, if so, fine, if not, why not?
I don't know the answer to that question, because I wasn't involved in the PennVest financing, but again, we'll get back to you with an answer.
Okay, and the attorney would appreciate correspondence back to me in writing so I can put it with the will.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, any other visitors or public comment?
We're next meeting on September 17th at 5:00 PM. We're going to have a budget work session on September 17th at 3:00 PM. Doylestown Township admin offices will be closed on Monday, September 2nd for Labor Day. And remember, the schools are back in session, and please be careful driving. Thompson Performing Arts Series continues at the CNN Amphitheater in Central Park. Events will start at 7:00 unless otherwise noted. August 21st is the sensational Soul Cruisers. Thursday, August 22nd is Big Chill. Wednesday, August 28th is Jimmy and the Parrots. And Saturday, September 28th is the Back to School movie, Mary Poppins Returns. Doylestown Township Annual Golf Outing is, we still have openings for foursomes, is August 26th, Monday, next Monday, at Doylestown Country Club. I believe it's an 8:30 registration and 9 o'clock kickoff time. Shotgun start. Idyll Float is September 7th, a Saturday at Fanny Chapman Pool. It starts at noon for large dogs and 2:15 for small dogs. Dog park members, it costs you $10. Non-members, it costs you $15, and you have to bring your certification that your pets are, you know, up in all their shots and so on. And you can go to Doylestown Rec for more information. 2019 Discount Park tickets are available at the admin for purchase. And Leaf and Yard Recycling is the third Saturday of each month from 9 till 11. The drop-off site is located in New Britain entrance to Central Park. And then go again to our website for more information. All right, next item on the agenda is minutes approval for a regular meeting on July 16th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve.
Any corrections? No, hearing none? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have a correspondence from Mr. Hedge for his resignation since he's moved out of town to, from the Doylestown Township Municipal Water Authority. Is there a motion to accept Mr. Hedge's...
I'll make the motion to accept it, and just as a little background, I mean, Ed has been on the CMA. Hear me, Ed?
No, you have to go closer.
Hello? 18 and a half years, invaluable as far as the annual budget and financial statements. And just as an example of the volunteers we have in the audience now, and the volunteers in a lot of our committees, Ed is a senior partner in Kreischer Miller, which is one of the largest CPA firms in the area. So for 18 and a half years, he's devoted his time to his community. So we're going to miss him. He always had the calming effect. He would listen intently to the discussions and get everybody calmed down, and in a good manner, and we're just really going to miss him. And I would like, if we accept his resignation, to then ask the manager to get an ad going to replace Ed. So I made the motion to accept his resignation.
I'll second, but I want to add a comment that I used to work at Kreischer Miller, and I worked with Ed Hegy for seven years, actually before his firm, Hegy Kramer, Connell Murphy &amp; Gold Camp, was acquired by Kreischer Miller, and he's a fantastic guy, and I'm sure we're going to miss his...
Well, I apologize for mispronouncing his name. Mr. Hegy.
Hegy.
Yeah, okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next item is, we got a letter from Mr. DeViva for voting. Districts 1 and 8 are returning to the township building. Will residents be entering in the front door for both districts?
Yes, they will. And they have looked at this facility, and they believe they can accommodate 1 and 8 in this room.
Okay, great. The next item is the House of Representatives.
Is that okay?
Yeah. Do we need to vote on that?
No, I just want to make sure.
No.
How are we going to get that information? I know the Board of Elections will send out new voter registration.
Yeah, the Board of Elections will send out notification. They send letters to the residents, and the voters, I should say, in those districts. In addition, we will post information on our website, social media, and in the past day of, we've had signs out front.
This would be starting November?
No, I'm trying to look and talk into the microphone at the same time, so, not being rude.
Okay. November, then, would be the first election here?
Yes, it would be the November election coming up. So everybody, 1 and 8 will come back, come back home.
There you go. All right, next item is the Outstanding Citizen Communication Award that was awarded to Doylestown Township by Pennsylvania Association Township Officials, was recognized by the House of Representatives, and a citation is here. It's a lovely recognition of our accomplishment, and we thank Representative Wendy Ullman for this honor. And like I said, if anybody wants to see it, it's very pretty, it's up here. Next item is a report from the solicitor.
The first item is that Mr. and Mrs. Perheen, who live at 607 Coverbridge Lane, are requesting that the town...
that the Township enter into a license agreement permitting them to maintain within the Township's open space, I believe, and existing swing set, some minor landscaping, and some improvements to their driveway, with the understanding that the license agreement would therefore make it a consensual thing. And I think he's here to express the reasons why he's requesting it and ask the Board's approval.
My name is Jeff Brand, and my wife and I have owned 607 Coverbridge Lane for about 20-some years. So anyway, just a little background, when we purchased the property, we got plans, and the plans, if you look from the road, it appears that the property lines go straight back. We knew that from the right of our driveway, that the landscaped area, we knew that that was actually Township property, but if you look at the property, it looks like our property. So we've been maintaining it, that we knew, we've been maintaining it, we've been cutting the grass, planting shrubs, and so on and so forth. So it turns out that there's a much larger chunk of our property that is the Township property. So we're trying to sell our house. Someone came in and they wanted to put in a driveway. They got a surveyor out, the code enforcement officer from the Township came out, and apparently, instead of the lines, property lines going straight back from the road, they go diagonal, actually from right to left. So they go diagonal across our backyard, and a large chunk of our property, including the swing set, a small portion of a driveway addition that we put on, all of this is now Township property. As a matter of fact, as a side note, there was a neighbor that was complaining about water runoff many years ago. Township came out, they asked us to put in a drainage system. It was an expensive drainage system, we had no problem doing it. That drainage system is now on the Township property. So all we're asking for is a license to use that area. We will maintain it, we will indemnify the Township if there's any problems, whatever really the Township is looking for, we have no problem doing, but we just wanna be able to use that property. And we also wanna make sure that when we sell it, the buyers will be able to use it as well. So we would like that license to be, excuse me, transferable. I guess that's all I have at the moment. We presented pictures, some photographs to Stephanie and to Mr. Garten. I get, you guys hopefully have those. I don't have them here tonight, but...
I have a problem with you, Jeffrey, having the license, but I don't want this to be going on forever, you know? It's not yours to, it's not yours to give.
Right, my only, the only concern that I have is that when we, when we sell the property, we have to, we have to, we're gonna be telling the buyers, obviously, what's going on, and I know it can't go on forever, but if we tell them, gee, this is gonna last five years, 10 years, 15 years, they might legitimately wonder what's gonna happen at the end of that time period. So I guess I would like to have it long enough that a buyer is gonna be comfortable.
What's the only structure on our property?
I'm sorry, say that again?
It's the only structure on our property, the swing set.
The swing set, and that's probably my biggest concern, which I've talked to Jeff about before.
I'm sorry, I'm having a little, the acoustics in here are not great, I'm having a little trouble hearing you, I'm sorry.
You said there's a drainage improvement, and there's a swing set? A swing set?
A swing set, and a small portion of a driveway. Those are the only structures that are on there. And now, by the way, the swing set is not visible from the road. You could be driving by, you wouldn't know it's there.
But the swing set could be moved to your property.
The swings, the swings that can be taken down.
Yes.
I mean, at this point, we don't use it anymore.
And how big a portion of the driveway is on our property?
Uh, probably several inches.
I wouldn't worry about, but I don't think it's fair to whoever's gonna buy it to not, to have it not clear that that's not their property, and it's not part of their property.
Wait, I'm sorry, say that again?
Take down the swing set, and I think that we'll be okay.
Happy to take down the swing set. Yeah.
What do you guys think?
I agree.
And I don't know if you have to have it resurveyed or whatever, but they're gonna have to know that they're, part of their driveway is on Township property, and then they can't expand on that.
I, that isn't a problem. I have no problem letting, giving full disclosure to the buyers and letting them know everything, but I would love to have a license agreement that I could present to the buyers when that's ready.
For several inches of parking lot or driveway?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
For several inches of driveway, you need a licensing agreement? For several inches of driveway, is that why you want a license?
Well, we have, once again, it's more than that, because it's the use of the backyard. So for example, if you walk down the hill, halfway in our backyard, by the time you get halfway down, that's Township property. So...
So it's our property?
That's true. It is your, and once again, we weren't aware of this when we bought it, it's absolutely Township property. We just wanna have the right to use the property, keep the driveway there, we'll take down the swing set, as I said, whatever conditions the Township thinks is appropriate, we're more than happy to agree to. No one else is...
I would say, if it's a few inches for the driveway, leave the driveway alone. Take down the swing set, and then we're done.
Right. And we're not gonna give you a license to use the property. It's our property. I mean, it exists there, it's in your backyard, you can use it, but it's not something that we're gonna license. I don't, I don't feel comfortable doing that.
My only concern is that if, without some sort of a license, that a buyer, when they see the actual property line, which of course, we didn't know when we purchased this 20-some years ago, we're not, we're never, we're never gonna be able to sell it. All we're asking for is, once again, a license agreement, just to be able to use it, and whatever conditions the Township thinks is appropriate, we're willing, we're more than willing to...
I mean, I guess what he's, what he's saying is, if you have a license, he at least can tell to a potential buyer you have a right to use it.
Right.
Only other thing I would call to your attention is, theoretically, and I'm, this law's changed recently, it used to be that you couldn't acquire property by adverse possession against the mentality of the Commonwealth, but now you can. So it would certainly make it a consensual use as opposed to an adverse possession, that you would avoid somebody coming along five years from now and saying, well, we've been...
It's mine.
Mine, yeah.
We're making a record here, it's not, it's no longer a hidden use, it's...
Well, now you know, so it's open and notorious.
Open and notorious, so...
And we would certainly be willing to waive, if we can possibly waive, we would do that.
We have, and I'm not speaking for, we have done this in the past. Someone that had a shed in the Township's property, we let it, if the Board approved some, some years ago, a license for that shed.
And to remain until they sell the property, and to remove it at that time. And the driveway is literally, it's inches where they're over the line. It's the swing set, and because Jeff and I were talking about our children being about the same age, so I know that the swing set's probably 20 years old or so, 15, and so that concerns me more than anything else, of making sure that that is removed before you actually sell the property.
Understood.
Recognizing for a letter or something from our Solicitor that lets them know that a portion of the driveway is over the line, I think, you know, is certainly helpful. It's open space, it's open for, you know, them to use, however, you know...
It's open for everybody.
It's open for everybody to use, but it's not obviously for structures or things like that. And I think we need to make sure that that doesn't happen again.
Yeah, and once, once again, we're certainly, we have no problem removing the swing set. And, once again, from a practical standpoint, of course, it's Township property, it's open for everyone's use. From a practical standpoint, I can't see anyone really wanting to use that who doesn't own the property, but, which I think from a practical standpoint, I don't think it's going to be, well, it doesn't seem like it's adverse to the interests of the Township if we agree to maintain it, and so on and so forth.
It's not adverse, I know, it's not adverse to the Township, I just, I have a reluctance to give you some kind of use to property that is ours, you know, that it belongs to everybody. And I can see where a license might be construed to, wow, it's ours, we can put a, you know, picnic table out here, and we could have a party, we could bring in fencing, we could do all kinds of other things on there. I just don't, I just don't see the point. You bought the property not knowing it was Township, Township property, and I don't know what else to say, I just, I don't feel comfortable creating a legal document that gives you, you know, exclusive right, or gives your buyer exclusive right to the property.
It wouldn't have to be exclusive, it could be revocable. I'm just thinking of ideas that might make this more palatable to the Township.
What you're gonna get is a letter from Stephanie or the Solicitor saying that there's a portion of your driveway that's on Township property, and we recognize that. But that the rest of the property remains Township property, but it's, of course, it's can be used by anyone, including your buyers.
Well, that's fine, as long as it includes the owners of the property, as long as, as long as the owners can use it, that's fine.
Of course, but it's a recognition that it's owned by the Township, but it's available to use by everybody, including you. And we always have a, we have a constant easement that goes with, and we can go on that property anytime we need to, just so you know. I mean, we can't, if we have a license to your parties, I mean, we may not, you know, that could restrict our access to it as well. So I think what's, the best you're gonna get of this is a recognition that part of your driveway is on Township property, and that the rest of the property is owned by the Township, available for use for everybody, especially the buyers of the property, and the current owners.
Although, once again, the license agreement could give you whatever rights you want to go on the property, I guess I'm, I'm sorry, I don't need...
I'm under your line here.
I don't mean to be argumentative, that's not my point, I'm just like, doing my best to try to convince everybody, but apparently I'm not, it's not working.
Well, I'm just one person, I'm gonna let the rest of the Board speak.
I agree.
You don't think a letter stating that is substantial to the...
Um, I hope so. I can't tell you. My, I mean, I don't know how a buyer's gonna, gonna react.
I don't know either. It seems like if you got an official letter from the Township saying, here's, here's the deal, this is this, this is that, reasonable buyer.
Yeah, I, look, as I said, that's really my, my big concern. If it was just me, if I was gonna be living there forever and ever, a letter would suffice. I just don't know how a buyer's gonna react, that's, that's my only problem. So...
You wanna get the letter and try it?
Sure. I mean, well, as long as I can maybe come back here, and if the letter's for some reason doesn't work, if I could have the opportunity to come back and make my case one more time, that would be fine.
Always welcome to come back and see us.
Okay.
You need a motion for this?
No.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Sale of cell tower. Sale of cell tower.
Board has been engaged, together with some of the, of your advisory groups, in a discussion for some time about the variety and process of perhaps selling the lease on the cell tower located behind this building. This building. And to that end, the Township solicited proposals from, I think, five or six potential purchasers of the rights to the cell tower. Your Township Manager has generated a recommendation based on the analysis done by your Finance Director and your Budget Analyst, so I think it's appropriate if she just sort of goes through that, because she's the author, and I will tell you that we did receive back two proposals that are discussed in the, in the recommendation, and depending upon where the Board is, you would either say we're not going to go forward, or you're going to accept one of the, one of the potential buyers.
Thank you, Jeff. At this time, having engaged Steel in the Sky to do an analysis for the Board in reference to the opportunities for the sale of the lease, and the information we received from the RFPs that we put out, we would recommend selling the lease to Crown Castle, who is the current, I guess, person, or company that facilitated...
Current tenant.
Current tenant, thank you, Jeff, for 50 years, in the amount of 727,000, I believe is, 27...
345.
345, thank you. Thousand for the 50-year term, and we would recommend you consider selling that lease so that we can move forward with the sale. We've seen a decline in the lease payments over the years. We kind of hit our peak, and we have seen the decline, and therefore, we're recommending the sale.
Okay, we've all had a chance to think about this for some time now. See the analysis, and we see the recommendation. What's the thought of the Board?
I would like to make a motion that we make that proposal, accept...
I second that. Any further discussion?
I had a question. There was a mention about revenue sharing. Is that part of the...
No, I don't believe it is.
No.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any other questions? Hearing none, calling the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We, here Mark, this proceeds to...
I think that was something we wanted to...
We'll have those discussions during the budget process.
You would have to use it for a capital project, however.
I think that that's something we will pass on to the Ways and Means Committee, let them come up with some recommendations on best use of that, those funds.
Thank you, all right. Chief has already spoken. Township Engineer, anything for you?
He discussing the Turk Road Crosswalk, I don't know if I can get into that now, it's under Dave's.
Yeah, I think Jeff, I'd like to have him review his memo graphics, the sketches that he put together, as well as the cost estimates for the crosswalk at Turk Road and Pebblewood, Pebble Ridge Drive, Pebble Ridge Road, I'm sorry. Jeff?
So we had been tasked to look at, due to resident concerns of the crossing of Turk Road from Pebble Ridge Road in the community, off of Pebble Ridge Road, to get into the park and have access to the park. The consensus from the residents is that they cross from the southwest corner, which is shown there, where the new sidewalk is, directly across Turk Road, and you can see a band, a gray band that goes between the trees, which is kind of a worn path where most of them access currently. So we took a look at the possibilities of adding a compliant crosswalk with signage and handicap ramps as well, this being the first option from the southwest corner by providing crosswa, I'm sorry, handicap ramp on Pebble Ridge Road, a short section of sidewalk to another ramp, and then crossing and going around the trees to preserve as much of that pine buffer that is there today between the neighborhood and the park. So that and there is the first option, if you wanna switch to the next slide. We then took an alternate off of that to attempt to use the existing location of the crossing to shorten the path into the park. It would require additional excavation to get a handicap, or an ADA, I'm sorry, compliant path into the park. It would also require the removal of, I think, four to five trees in this option. Go to the next one. Next one moves to the northwest corner, which takes you around a fire hydrant and flowerbed from, on that corner there, crossing a direct path into the park there. That one would require additional grading. I apologize, the one before was three trees, this is the one that would take five trees due to the extensive grading. It's a higher embankment at that location, so this one would require the removal of five trees if we went directly into the park here. We switch to the next slide. This one stays on the northwest corner, but then makes its way back to the existing path through the trees, similar removal of two to three trees and into the park. So these are the various options that were looked at. Of the southwest corner concerns were, it's very, it's closer to... were, it's very, it's closer to the end of Turk Road that comes uphill, it's less of a sight distance, it's further away from any other access point, cars are driving faster. There's a row of hedge, hedge row there along Turk Road from the southwest corner, and there's also a utility pole right at the corner there, two utility poles actually, that also present an issue from sight coming from the, I guess, the north to south on Turk Road. Bringing it to the northwest corner provides more sight lines for both the pedestrians in both directions on Turk Road, but it also provides a further distance away from the motorists coming from the south on Turk Road. Residents coming from the north on Turk Road come either from a stop sign from Alms House Road or from around a bend in, in Turk Road or Alms House Road, I should say, which then, you know, both locations would require vehicles to start from a slower speed and have a larger sight distance to the pedestrians without the utility poles in the way. So those are the four options we looked at, cost-wise, they're very similar, they're within a couple thousand dollars of each other, as far as varying degrees of excavation or tree removal, the crossings are pretty much very similar in, in all options.
One do you like? I mean, you, you don't want us to pick one?
No, 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 I, I, I mean, I would prefer, you know, if I were a resident living in the neighborhood, I wouldn't wanna lose the buffer in any shape or form, I would, I mean, they're very mature trees, so to go from the preferred resident option of being on the southwest corner as everyone travels up the south side over the, we'll call it the south side of Pebble Ridge Road, intends to cross at that location, it keeps the, the crossing where it's preferred by the residents, and it also gets you around the hedge row without too much inconvenience. I think we, we discussed the possibility of removing one of the poles, utility poles that was?
Could you flip back, Jeff, is it option one you're speaking to?
Correct.
If you can go back to? Go back to option one, Ed?
Yeah.
One, one or one A, actually probably one, right, that's the option Jeff is speaking?
Yeah, so there is one redundant utility pole on the southwest corner that had been marked to be removed, it never was, but the line's removed from it, so PICO will need to be contacted, it should be able to easily be removed, so that removes one of the conflicts on that corner. There should be some hedge trimming that can also provide additional sight distance at that location. It's not, it's not that the sight distance is not ideal, it's just you get more if you're on the northwest corner, any little bit helps, but this location is viable. I mean, going through in this location to the existing crossing as well, that one is, removes a couple trees within the buffer, so at that point, to me, it's a preference of, do we wanna lose the part of the buffer or not? I think option one is probably the best option.
Has there been any discussions with any of those two residents that live on those opposite corners, this is?
No.
Not from the township side.
No, there has not, at the budget work session that we had, and Mr. Cololo asked the same question of me the other day, and went back to the minutes from the budget work session, and it was the consensus of the board that we have the Township Engineer look at the site and determine that we would have the least amount of land that we would need from the owner and that we would then have consensus from the board to know that we've achieved the limited amount of land that we need for an easement, that then we could go approach the property owner. So my hope would be to go approach him, quote, tomorrow.
No, and that's fine, that's why, you know, you might approach him, he might say no, and you're, and you're on to the northwest corner.
If the southwest would say no, then we would go to the northwest, absolutely. Now, I know that when we were out there, the residents, I know this was a way to save the tree line, but I believe Mr. Salinick's gonna jump up at any minute now, because if we can go to one or the other?
One, one A, or one, yeah, one A.
Can we flip, just so we're all, thank you, I believe it's southwest side coming across and that we would impact the tree line a bit, that it's a straight shot, and I think that was a preference for the residents when we did meet out in the field.
Okay.
And I think you're gonna have a comment?
We have two residents here from the area, yeah, I'd like to hear you guys.
Bob Salinick, 206 Pebble Ridge Road, I did have the opportunity to meet with two of the township supervisors, Mr. Tomko, Ms. Mason, and the Township Engineer at the site with another resident who reviewed a couple of the options. The residents really do favor the, the second option that you presented this evening, that is how we go through to the park now. The reason, and let me tell you, the trees that are there are not that valuable, you could lose one or two of them. The reason we don't like going around the trees is because it puts you right where the Little League ball field is, and you're in the stands, kids are swinging bats, doing whatever, so we try to avoid that, and that's why we wanted to go, that's why we do go through the trees now.
Can we put it back to option two again?
I think, Bob, were you referring to this current option, one A?
Oh, okay, I'm looking at sheet four.
Yes, I understand.
I, I think also we need to point out that the county with their, their trail project, Stefan, if I'm not correct, that trail's gonna get, and then, and it's shown on this plan, you could see the trail is, is in gray, but there's a dashed line that's kind of in front of it, is the existing trail, it's gonna get realigned and pushed outward a little bit more, so the county is, is going to improve that trail for us and, and pave it as part of their project, and we're going to tie into whether we tie in, in number one or one A, yes, that's correct, at that location.
All right, what do you need, what do we need to do?
I, I had, I had a comment, one of the, one of the prior board meetings, the chief brought up the potential of putting a stop sign in that location, he said that there was a speeding concern as well, and he thought that that might help the situation, have we, have we looked?
Well, the issue is we can't use speed, or stop signs control speed, it's unlawful, it's not, and in accordance to vehicle code, we can't do that. Secondly, we'd have to meet the warrants for a stop sign, and I don't think, and having a quick conversation with the traffic engineer, Matt Johnston, that we probably wouldn't meet the warrants for the stop sign, and we'd have to go through the process anyway, so we'd have to get traffic data if we would want to see if that's the case, to officially determine that, we'd have to get traffic counts, do the warrant analysis, and, and document it, to make it official, we can't just put the stop sign up because then it would be unenforceable by the police department, so.
I would suggest there's like three step process here, one, authorization from the board for the staff to reach out to the property owner and obtain the appropriate easement, two, if the board chooses to select one of these options in terms of the improvement, would come out of a, this year's budget or whether we end up having to push for the 2020 budget, and lastly would be to have the traffic advisory committee look at the potential for the three-way stop.
I'd like to interject also that the cost estimates that was prepared by Jeff and his memo do not include engineering, this is strictly construction cost, and speaking with Stephanie and looking at staff capability, meaning public work staff, I think that this is a project that would go out to bid as well, so we'd possibly be looking right on the edge at paying prevailing wage rates, so I'm sure Jeff took that into account when he did that, but also just wanted to bring those up, that engineering's not included, and we would probably put this out to bid once it's designed and have a bid package from, from Jeff.
Any of this grant potential?
No.
I have to come to the mic. Colleen Mullin, I live on Old New Road, and we had talked also about tying in potentially a trail on Old New as they're paving, so that is less than a mile from Pebble Ridge, people cut through the neighborhood starting at Pebble Ridge, go through Stony Lane, come over Westaway and go down to Old New, so that perhaps this could tie in to a bike and hike trail conversation if that's an option for Old New, so I don't know if we should think about that.
The bike and hike committee has been talking about the Old New Road since you brought it up, they've talked about it a couple times, they're gonna look at it, actually, Rick was at their meeting this morning, and they talked about it, I know they wanna talk, Tom Kelso, who's the, been on the committee for a long time, wants to talk with Mr. Tomko about when they do the paving, possibly putting Old New Road on what we call a road diet.
On the what?
And, that road diet.
Oh, what?
Word I hate, but anyway, putting it on a road diet and being able to create a lane, which would be a protected bike lane.
Right.
So, they're looking at that as part of it.
So that would be maybe a connector?
Yeah, but this is a?
It would be a different, it wouldn't be able to fully connect?
I'm talking at a time, I'm, they're gonna yell at me.
What's that?
I'm talking at a time.
So I guess my, I just thought maybe that would be a way we could look for grant opportunities to treat it as a connector if there is a trail happening there, if not, fine, but it was just an idea.
Yeah, I, outside of the one that the county's doing at the present time, and as Mr. Salinick pointed out to the board previously, he's, he and his neighbors are anxious to see this crossing, which obviously would benefit anyone else throughout the entire neighborhood?
Right, right.
Who crosses to Turk Park, to see this happen sooner rather than later, and, you know, I mean, the county's doing theirs, Jeff's working on that project for the county, I don't think it's gonna happen for a couple more years, so I think?
Right.
We're looking to the board to have us do this?
Yeah.
Or to have a contractor probably do this for the township between now and?
Now, before anything else, yeah.
You know, spring of next year.
Yeah, okay, thanks, just an idea.
Thank you. Sorry, it's okay.
Just one more quick thing, I just wanted to, on behalf of the neighbors, thank the board supervisors for moving on this and for Stephanie's and Dave's and Jeff's help on this, we really do appreciate it.
Thanks, Bob. All right, so we don't need any votes, it looks like?
Well, it looks like there's a consensus for one A, so they just need to proceed.
Is that correct, everyone?
Everybody wants one A?
Okey dokey, all right, go at it.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Temporary trailers.
Okay, yes, you have a memo for me in your packet for the, your, your discussion consideration for a 24-month lease extension with Will Scott, that's a William Scotsman is the, the company that took over ownership of Mod Space who owns the trailers. Basically, back in 2017, you approved a two, a two-year lease for us to occupy those trailers and use them for admin space, police department, public meeting room and park rec. We received a proposal from Will Scott to extend that lease with the same terms, in other words, the same monthly rent for the 72-by-60 trailer, which was the former administration trailer, to be used as park rec space, along with the rental of the ramp configuration for a monthly amount of $3,962.50. So I'm asking for your approval of that 24-month lease extension, which would take us to, basically, from June, it's, we're gonna back up a little bit and go from June of 30th of this year to June 30th of 2021.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the extension?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. Uh, tree, no, wait, 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 lost my place, wait, duh, 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 duh.
Yes, municipal complex.
Change order number six and seven.
Yes, Electrotech change order number six, six and seven, you have here in your packet, there's a memo for me documenting the change order from Electrotech, number six and seven. Number six is for $6,490.08, and change order seven is for $3,151.21, totaling $9,641.29. This has been reviewed and approved by the, reviewed and discussed and approved by the building committee, and I'm asking for board approval.
And you wanna speak to this?
Make a motion to approve change order six and seven.
Third second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, change orders 11 and 12?
This is Penn Builders, this is also for municipal complex construction, phase two construction, Penn Builders Incorporated, change order 11 and 12. We have, we met, the building committee met earlier today and we had some discussion regarding change order 11 and change order number 12, we have some changes to the numbers that are in your, my cover memo in the packet. The building committee has met, and if you look at my memo to you, the building committee is recommending holding off payment for item number four and change order number 11 until we have further clarification as to those costs. At this point in time, the revised amount for change order 11 is $8,135.52. Change order 12 is going to be reduced by $100 because we're eliminating one item, that total is $7,877, making the entire change order come to total for 11 and 12 at this point, 6,000, $16,012.52, I'm asking for your approval.
Make a motion to approve, as you had revised that.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. 2019 tree pruning and takedown and wood recommendation on August 15th, 2019, four bids were received for our 2019 tree pruning and takedown contract, Jimmy Tree and Landscape Contractors LLC was a low bidder, I'm asking for your approval to award the base bid in the amount of $103,125 plus add alternates number one and two, add alternate one is $3,875, add alternate two is $11,900 totaling $118,900 for this year's tree pruning and takedown contract.
Have you worked with these guys before?
Yes, we've actually had Jimmy now, they did last year, they've done some emergency stuff for us as well, and they also, also do snow plowing for us as well in, in another capacity, so we've worked with Jimmy's Trees, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, is a motion to approve this contract to Jimmy's?
Motion to approve Jimmy's tree.
All right, second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just a, a question around this, when this work starts, how is it communicated to the residents?
Social media is our primary means of communication to the residents as to when our, when that work will start, a lot of the work in the road isn't within the roadway, so it's just a matter of that they're occupying the road and traffic control.
Right, yeah, I was just curious, and just how do we notify them, you know, there're gonna be people out there, I mean, do we, we post the whole list of the streets that they're doing?
We don't typically, we can, we typically just put up that we're doing it, and eventually, I mean, I can have Andrea and we can work with Paul and say, when it starts, say we're gonna be out on New Britton Road or Shady, or Chapman Road, wherever, we can do that, yeah, that'd be fine.
Whatever's best.
Yeah.
All right, road program, CO number one, this is a letter from Jeff, but it's not from Jeff, is it?
It is from Jeff, so let me, I'll, let me explain, yes, as a matter of, last month, I, I brought forth to you the request to approve the, the road program bid with J.D. Morris, James D. Morrissey Incorporated, and we made some changes to that, we reduced the base bid by $130,000, $130,812.20 to bring the base bid to $401,882.00, plus also adding an add alternate items, bringing the entire road program for 2019 to $511,715.70. At that time, the change order was not in proper order, and I'd asked that we tabled the change order, this is the change order that was prepared by Jeff's office, by Jeff, and we had, had James D. Morrissey representative sign it, I'm asking just, as a matter of paperwork that we okay it, approve it officially and sign off on it. So it's just documenting the, the change to the base bid plus addition of the add alternates, so we have paperwork.
Okay, all right, is a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve 2019 road program.
Thank you, second?
Can we just say, road program, change order number one, please?
Yes.
Change order number one.
Thank you.
I'll second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next item, manager, there's a vacancy on the auditor, board of auditors, we have an applicant.
We just, yes, it's six o'clock this evening, Patty Mett, our longtime auditor, resigned within the month, she moved out of the community, we posted the advertisement, we had not received any until six o'clock tonight, we received one, so I'm assuming the board will wanna make arrangements quickly to meet the person and perhaps make an appointment, so.
We'll schedule something after the meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
Training request from Rick Shea.
Yes, have a training request for Mr. Shea, our fire marshal, to attend the fire investigation seminar October 14th in South Carolina, and recommend his ability to travel and stay at that training.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, all right, supervisors, Jen, what do you got?
Um, well, school's starting soon, and so we have all that in our mind, but I guess I wanted to start out. guess I wanted to start out, uh, saying, since the last Board of Supervisors meeting, our country again mourns after a series of mass shootings. We grieve together for those lost in these terror attacks in El Paso, Dayton, and Gilroy. The shooter in El Paso's mother called the police prior to the attack with, uh, concerns about his gun purchases. The shooter in Dayton was kicked out of school for his threatening and violent obsessions. Studies have shown a majority of mass shooters tell at least one person of the plan, uh, their plans, and put out distinct warning signs. Columbine, Sandy Hook, Parkland, Tree of Life, Pulse nightclub, all had shooters that either told someone or made threats. Pennsylvania just recently rolled out, uh, a program called Safe to Say, uh, that goes out to all the schools, this is public, private, um, uh, charter schools, um, where there's an anonymous tip line for anybody who sees these warning signs that has these concerns, so that you can reach out, um, but it, it also has an educational component to teach the students, teach the teachers, and the community how you can recognize warning signs in these. So, uh, it was designed by the Sandy Hook Promise Group, uh, they're a nonprofit, uh, and it has been in, uh, in use in other states in different ways. Um, it is the hope that this tip system and education component will decrease not only school shootings, but the epidemic of death by suicide, bullying, abuse, drug use, among other concerns. So I just wanted to announce, um, that there's a free app, you just, uh, go into your store, your app store, and you look up Safe, the number two, and Say, and you can download that on your phone. Uh, you can read more about it at the CB School District page, or Safe, the number two, say PA.org. Um, it's designed for schools, but it is open for the community, so it'll direct these concerns to one database, one place where they can, uh, collect all the concerns. You see these things where somebody notices one small thing that wouldn't in itself indicate that something bad's gonna, but then there, if multiple people comment about the same person, or connect about the same person, it might trigger some actual action. Um, additionally, um, we had just learned that, uh, there was water testing in our school district, and nine of our schools in Central Box tested above the EPA standards for lead in their water, and that included our Varion cuts. The school district announced that it has started root mediation and anticipates completion before the start of school. The school district encourages the public to call 267-893-2001 with any concerns, uh, about the water quality. That's it.
Ken?
Um, two items, one is the township had their audit done, and, um, one of the impressive things about it again is there's no management findings, no things to report, so, uh, just wanted to thank the staff for all the top-notch work they do, it was a great job. Um, wanted to highlight two for you for what's been happening on the pension advisory committee. Uh, there was a number of, uh, action items that they had on their list, one was to meet with that greedy, the financial investor, and understand what she does, when she does it, how she does it, and also, uh, get her thoughts on how do we come up with a more, uh, user-friendly report, and so that has happened, and we should be getting that, uh, her sample back on that fairly soon. The team is also, the committee has also met with, uh, Jim Kennedy and the actuary, so they, they drilled him pretty good, so, um, that committee is really getting into the details and really starting to, uh, put some meat to the bone here, so we'll find some good stuff coming out of there.
Um, Rick?
Uh, first, I just would like to thank Ken, I mean, we've come a long, 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 and Colleen and Bob, a long, long, long way in pension, um, so, um, I appreciate your efforts in driving and corralling and getting direction, maybe is a better, better way, and I thank the committee, I'm, I am impressed with the pension committee and advisory committee and what they're doing. Uh, my committees, excuse me, um, also Colleen and Bob, you guys ought to come up here. Uh, the tour committee meets, uh, monthly to review the bills, and you're gonna see one from, uh, Bucks County Water and Sewer, the next, next, uh, agenda item. One of the issues that's come up in the last couple of months was the hard, they call it blue rock, that we're running into in the Arms House Road section, Militia Road and Arms House Road. So through the encouragement of our committee, um, we sent out a letter and then asked all the, um, people involved to come to the meeting, and I, we had over 50% show up, which was good. And we're gonna, you're gonna see that coming to this board, that's why I wanted to give you a little prep. Um, it, it's the issue of, s- s- some of them, uh, were going to use gravity, but now, the issue may be that the alternative is to use a grinder, and John Butler did an excellent job, I, I'm, I was very happy the way he presented it. Um, the, the issue is, of course, cost, the grinder is, is a little bit more, anywhere from one to $2,000 more, and recommended a $10 monthly fee, uh, for maintenance of it. The issue becomes, if Bucks County stays with the gravity feed, and they keep hitting what they call this blue rock, it's, it's, it's virtually impenetrable, they have to drill holes, chip away, drill holes, chip away. The concern with Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority is if they continue along and do gravity, and the homeowner wants to connect, odds are they're gonna hit blue rock, and it's extremely, extremely expensive, it's special equipment. So we're trying to get the residents to take a look, reevaluate where they're at, and they asked a lot of good questions, very, very good, and deep, deep, and, uh, well-thought-out questions, to make sure that they understand the consequences, that if we stay with gravity and they hit blue rock, it's gonna cost them two or three times, I think the multiple was three to four times, so it's the 20, 30,000. So it was a very good meeting, um, we had a good give and take, I think one of the 15 homes that I counted, um, was not in favor of it, and the rest of them were milling it over and thinking about, uh, and getting a plumber involved, which was another good portion of the meeting. And two of them, we may be able to avoid this whole situation if we can bring them in the back way. So I think you're gonna be seeing that in one of the September board meetings, where we're gonna have to discuss the decision of what direction to give Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority on this. The other, um, committee is my, um, DTM Water. We received a survey back from the Pebble Ridge section, uh, just two streets, that we asked them if they would be interested in water along with sewer. The costs are anywhere from 15 to 17,000 dollars a homeowner, it's not cheap. Um, we received over 50% response, which is good, as you all know, um, but we wanna get everyone involved in this. So the other 15 homes, uh, one of the neighbors who has attended a couple of the meetings, has volunteered to go to four of those homes, 'cause he knows the people, and he's gonna talk to them and explain to them this is a good way to go, and Dick Bach, the, um, chair, is gonna go to the other homes and try to explain to them, at least give us an answer back. Fifteen didn't answer at all, and that's what we wanna, we wanna get. Um, and then go from there as far as, uh, whether it's economically feasible and we get enough participation. In addition, um, Jen, myself, and, um, Keith Haas, and Kevin Green, and Joe Van Hatten, had a, a, subcommittee meeting, and we talked about the, uh, water ordinance that we've been talking briefly about and trying to gather more data. Uh, I think it was very productive, I think we, we all learned some things that were going on that we weren't sure of, and some of the myths, uh, and, and had good discussion and clarification, we got some misconceptions rectified, and then we had a joint plan to go ahead and, and get different data, and look at that and see what it tells us. So, um, that's still an ongoing process, I know we've been talking about it for three or four months, and it hasn't fallen through the cracks, it's just, um, needs a little more detail. And the last thing, I'd like to thank Paul Gahr, we got another email thanking the, uh, the road crew, but of course, that's Paul, uh, for a quick response, uh, he went to the resident, franked discussion on what the options are, what we could do, et cetera, et cetera, and as I always say, for someone to take the time and effort to send in an email to the township to thank anybody, in this day and age, to me, is, is a big deal. Uh, so, and I also had personal experience, I had a, a resident contact me on a Sunday morning, um, about a month ago, and through, um, Paul, went to the resident, the resident got back to me the next day, was so impressed that at 10:00 AM that morning, Paul was knocking on his door. So, kudos to the township staff for all the good work they do, but also to Paul Gahr and getting the road crew recognized for what they really do, um, for our residents.
Thank you. Brian, do you have anything?
Uh, just because our next meeting falls after September 11th, I just wanted to, uh, talk about a couple of different things going on in our community. Uh, the first is the 9/11 Promise Run, it's actually a run that starts at the Pentagon and finishes, uh, at the World Trade Center in New York, it's three days, I'm gonna be participating myself doing 30 miles over those three days, along with, uh, hundreds of other people across the country, but one of the neat things is, it's a, it's a run, and it's also, there's also, uh, bike riders, and part of our Doylestown Trail System is gonna be utilized in that race, and, and when they surveyed the route, they were very specific to picking Doylestown as part of the route because of our trail system, so, um, pretty exciting, and, you know, you can go right online, the money raised for this all goes to children, um, loss of, you know, who lost their parents on 9/11, you can go online to 9/11 Promise Run, you can see the route, I think it'd be neat to have people out there and, you know, through our community and cheering these people on. Um, along with that, another thing that I think is important to know, and I, I think people know, but I don't know how many people recognize that, you know, we have one in, in Doylestown, we have one of the, it's in the borough, but we have one of the largest pieces of the World Trade Center in the entire country, it's a 20-foot I-beam that was granted to us, and, you know, you see a lot of these steel beams, uh, in, in different, um, memorials, but we actually have one of the largest pieces that was granted, so I encourage, if you haven't seen it yet, to, you know, take a few minutes to go down there and spend some time and reflect, that's a nice thing to do, and then, um, following up at the end of September on the 29th is the 9/11 Heroes Run, which is now gonna be, uh, used to be at Font Hill, but because the capacity has grown so exponentially, it's gonna be at CB West, um, is where that will be in, take off in the stadium. So, three really pretty significant things that we can do in our community to, uh, remember and reflect on September 11th.
When is the 9/11 Promise Run?
That starts on the 8th in, at the Pentagon, um, so we'll, they'll be coming through here, September 8th, and so it's, or excuse me, the 9th, it's the 9th, 10th, and 11th, so they'll be coming around this area on the 10th.
Thank you, that's cool. All right, I forgot to announce that, um, so this is the only thing I have, is that the Suicide Prevention Conference for 2019 is October 7th, um, Delaware Valley University, from 8:30 to 4:30, you can, you can link on to that, um, that conference through our township website. All right, then, next item on the agenda is unfinished business at the Pebble Ridge, Wood Ridge Sewer Project, payment requests, payment request number four is up. And, and, and Rick, you said your, your committee has reviewed these payment requests?
Yes, and, and this was presented, or we were hoping to present it at the last meeting, but, um, through our edit process, we found a couple of things we wanted changed and corrected before we brought it to the board, and now we're bringing it to the board, um, for, uh, payment of, question number four.
Would you like to make that?
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, motion, second?
Second.
Any other que, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the payment number four, and then there's a payment application number four, which is, um, for the Rutledge excavation.
That was also reviewed by the, um, subcommittee and recommended for approval.
$11,510.01. Is there a motion to approve this payment? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Eagle Scout proclamation for a young, um, man named Alexander Spear, troop number 71. Is there a motion to approve this proclamation? I'll make a motion to approve. Thank you. Is, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, his court of honor is Sunday, September 8th, at 2:00 at Temple Judea. All right, next item on the agenda is the, um, EE Office Automation Agreement, um, so, well, EE Off, EE Office Automation LLC Agreement, um, and it was on our agenda, and then it got off for correction, and it's back on, is there a motion to approve this?
Move to approve.
I'll second. Any questions? Good, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next item is the GHD 2009 MPDS IDD and E Program Proposal, all those acronyms made in 2000. It's for $21,650, we have to do this, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, then we'll be in compliance again for one more year, um, 2020 financial requirement and the MMOs, for uniform and non-uniform for 2010, looks like they cost about a million dollars, is that about right?
And you're, what you're do, what you're doing here is acknowledging receipt that you've been notified of the extent of your contribution is required.
We, we.
Acknowledge the receipt.
Enormous requirement here. All right, next item is the zoning hearing board applications, and I've never seen so many, but six.
Yeah, we are going to break a record this year with our zoning hearing board applications.
Are there any, several stick out to me, but are there?
Yes, and can we?
Yes, but one, one at a time.
Okay, so number one, um.
We read it, what's?
Okay, um, I would recommend that we need to send the solicitor, um, to make sure that there are conditions appropriate, they have a very large parcel, so having the animals or the horse, the little mini horses, but in terms of how they're operating, they're gonna need conditions to make sure that, um, they, I don't go awry there with having too much, too many, but have the right amount of visitors, um, for their nonprofit and everything.
So, so solicitor goes for?
To, number one, mhm. Um, number two, I wanna send, I'd like to send the solicitor in opposition, um, they want to have a large horse and a small horse come to visit, um, a property that does not meet the minimum requirements for having livestock, um, twice a year for two weeks in the spring and the fall, um, and I just don't think it fits the neighborhood or the, um, the minimum requirements under ordinance, so would recommend.
That's a half acre, isn't it?
It, a little over an acre, but yeah, I mean, the requirement's five, so they don't meet that, and I think even visiting twice a year is a little.
Even though all their neighbors love the idea?
Well, there's several neighbors, not all of them, and several of them have been contacting us, indicating as such.
Aye.
Yeah.
How long, how long have they had horses there?
They don't have any horses there.
They wanna bring horses.
They wanna bring.
Twice a year.
Twice a year.
I thought they had them there and they moved them.
No.
They never had them there.
I don't believe so, and an acre, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
The first one had horses.
The first one's had horses, yeah.
This one.
But they have a 10-acre parcel, that's fine. This one, I don't, I don't believe they've had them, if they have, it's been in violation, um, but, you know, they've, they need to have a minimum of five acres.
You just mentioned on the 129 Watercrest.
Mhm.
Yeah, I only saw positives, have negatives come in?
Uh, yes, we've had contact with residents here at the township, indicating negativity.
Okay, now, I, I understand a little bit, but does that go to the zoning, all this stuff go to the zoning?
Oh yeah, it's all going to zoning hearing board, and I'm recommending we send the solicitor on there.
Yeah, I understand, I, I just didn't see it.
Mhm, yeah.
All right, the next one.
The next one is, um, Miller Nicholas, um, I would again recommend that we send the, um, solicitor in opposition, uh, they're operating, we found out they are now operating a kennel in an R1 zoning with less, probably less than an acre of land, again, meeting minimum requirement, not meeting minimum requirements there.
Abres are up in arms about that.
Yes.
I, I have a question about that.
Mhm.
The property, um, it says the, um, the zoning ordinance says that you have to have It says the zoning ordinance says that you have to have, if it's over four dogs, they don't, if it's under four dogs, they don't need to comply with the zoning for a kennel. I, from what I understand from their business, a lot of times people will, those vans that they have, they take them to other people's houses to care for, so they aren't actually cared for at his residence.
Mm-hmm.
I think some are, but I wasn't sure if they had, if they only had, if they had less than four or four or less dogs, would they be in compliance then, or would they not be held to that zoning requirement?
I think it's the kennel, well, they're doing two things. I mean, they're, the coming and the going isn't really necessarily the issue, because a lot of contractors and things like that kind of come and go with staff a lot of times, but it is the operation of the kennel. And so, and you're supposed to be licensed with us when you have a kennel, and operating it appropriately with the right acreage and everything. And again, I believe that is requirement for five acres as well, and so they don't have that.
If they only house, if they house four or fewer animals, would they have to comply with that then, the zoning for a kennel?
I understood that it wasn't the number of dogs.
It's not the number of dogs.
Traffic and the in and out.
Traffic, and then the.
Trips, operating a business out of your home.
But again, you have to, you're supposed to have five acres to have a kennel.
And I think there's also construction.
Construction. Yeah, they have runs and things like that, yeah. You know, typically, if you have four dogs at home and they're your dogs, it's, you know, you're okay, but when you're having more, you know, and you're operating a kennel, that's another story, yeah.
I had an additional question was the, I think they, one of the things that they weren't complying with is the number of employees they had. I think that went beyond what they're allowed to have.
Correct, I mean, and depending on how they're running it, and I think that's what we need them at the zoning hearing board to clarify everything, and I think, you know, I know there's some opposition from residents, but it concerns me that, you know, a lot of times what happens is property owners start out running a business, and it's small, and it's unobtrusive, and then sometimes it just gets bigger than what they anticipate, and that's when, you know, we start to get the complaints, and it starts to come to the point where they need to go to the zoning hearing board, or they need to look to run an operation in a, in a more commercial setting.
It just, it brought about the question to me in general, the overall zoning question about how businesses are now run, where a lot of people have employees that aren't actually onsite.
Mm-hmm.
You have a lot of people that are telecommuting or going online and using tools like that. So I think maybe that's a consideration. We should talk to zoning board, looking at our ordinances.
That would be the Planning Commission, Planning Commission writes, and we just recently updated all of our ordinances related to home-based businesses, those who, you know, do the work at home, who do the telecommuting in county, things like that, versus when they do bring people into the house that are beyond the family and don't, and have people coming to the home. That's when it starts to get out of hand, and we need to make sure that we're following our ordinances, and that's why we have the check and balance of the zoning hearing board.
All right, next, and who else? Next is Valmore.
Robinson.
Oh, Robinson, sorry.
Robinson, I would leave to the zoning hearing board. If everyone recalls, that's the house that had the fire on Alms House Road last year, and they've been working very diligently to get it fixed. They have a non, kind of an old, non-conforming lot there, and so I would leave that to the zoning hearing board.
Okay, that's good. Now to Theodore Way.
Again, Theodore Way and O'Brien, I would leave to the zoning hearing board, both requesting variances, I think that can easily be addressed by the zoning hearing board.
Okay.
They need a board action to respect the first one to provide conditions to the zoning hearing board on the Bataha, then to oppose the Weider-Miller. Need an action from the board.
I make a motion, we send our solicitor to work out the issues with Bataha and then oppose Weider and Miller.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The rest, we're going to leave to zoning here.
Mm-hmm.
All right, sounds good. All right. Next item is the Treasurers' Report for August 20th, 2019. You receive the report online. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Similarly, the bills list for August 20th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's late. I'm going to dispense with the announcement, so we're adjourned.
Happy Labor Day, everybody.
Yeah. And my favorite word.
And the summer out there.